Morning, everyone. It's eight thirty-three. This is the budget meeting on Tuesday, January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three, eight, eight thirty-three AM. We're getting started. First item, our agenda is the minutes of the last budget meeting on January twenty-four. Any comments or correction of the minutes?
None.
On here. I move your put minutes.
Second.
All favor eye, eye. I don't see anyone from the public here. I don't see anyone. Is anyone on Zoom? Um, this is a hybrid meeting, and if anybody wants to comment, they can send email comments to B O S distribution at the Canada C T dot govern. We'll read them before the end of the meeting. Um, I don't see any other members of the public to comment here. So budget review, final review and discussion of budgets for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. A female was in a vote to approve. So, um, Josh, lead us off.
Sure. Um, so in maybe I'll share my screen just to share the summary of changes that you have in front of you. So on the screen and in front of you are a list of changes that have taken place during the Board of Selectmen Review Process. Um, I can go through those just to
Yeah, go through them each, each item.
Sure. Yep. Um, so starting on the expenditure side, the Board of Education operating. Oh, sorry. Those, the descriptions for the top two should be just switched. So the Board of House fourteen millions, little out, uh, the Board of Education Group Insurance went from fourteen million to fifteen point one million. We had originally budgeted a five percent increase and we then changed our number to reflect what the Board of Education had recommended their budget to be the superintendent's budget.
And they're, well, no, that's the Board of Ed has now approved their budget. So it's not the superintendent's budget anymore.
It's the Board of Education recommended budget.
Yeah, they, they recommended it last Monday night. What's their increase on, on health? Uh, or actually, this is more than just health benefits, but.
So that number itself, let me just say, is, I believe, just the health benefits, uh, and that's up thirteen point five percent.
Thirteen point five. That's probably the biggest item of the Board of Finance has to deal with. So.
Um, the next line down is the Board of Education Operating, which was budgeted uh, initially with the Board of Finance Guidance, which was two point nine percent over F Y twenty-two's actuals, two point nine percent, and then two point nine percent again. Um, so that was at eighty-five point six million, which then again got changed to the Board of Ed Recommended Budget at eighty-eight point six million, um, which represents an increase of three point, about three point five over last year's budget. Um, continuing down, the Recreation Kiwanis Park Supply Chemicals Line went from eighty-eight hundred to, uh, ten thousand, uh, eight hundred, an increase of two thousand, just due to the cost of chlorine, uh, coming in higher than expected. Animal Control, Land Use and Finance had their full-time, full-time and part-time salaries adjusted just due to anticipated salary savings. Uh, Animal Control went down about sixty-eight hundred, uh, in the Land Use Department across a couple, uh, positions that went down about forty-eight thousand. And in the Finance Department, that went down about eight thousand. Um, also from the expenditure size, there was, of course, uh, large changes due to, uh, recreation being pulled out and put into its own self-sustaining fund. Um, you can find that fund, uh, the details further in, into the other budget section of the budget books that you have. The budget as a whole didn't change, just the lines got separated and divided out into, um, into the, the, the fund itself.
Uh, yeah, Josh, explain that further.
We walk through that.
The budget doesn't change, but.
Sure. So the, the budget ask didn't change. The
The amount didn't change.
The amounts.
It's in a different, it's in a different bucket.
Just in a different bucket. Yeah. Where it shows up is, is slightly different. It does have an impact on the general fund budget, of course, by taking out, you know, a couple million of expenses and a couple million of revenue.
But those items didn't change, but the recreation budget went down because it's another budget.
Because it's reflected elsewhere.
Elsewhere. Okay. Got you.
And if you can just walk us through that when we get to it, but yeah, keep going.
Sure. Um.
Can I just ask you on the, on the, uh, changes to the salaries? Is that because we're just, uh, moving when people are starting or did we actually reduce headcount there?
Um, I think it's, there's some staff turnover, which, which
Cheryl, why don't you join us? We, we, we asked, uh, the other day to look at it, whether we've got all the, you know, a lot of things move in the course of the budget process and, uh, we looked at all personnel the other day. Cheryl made some.
Good morning. Um, in regards to planning and zoning, because of the changes in staff, we were able to bring those, um, three salaries down. So we looked at each one and where we would bring people in, and so we were able to see savings in that line.
Okay.
In Animal Control, we have changed the job description and the certifications working with P D. So we were able to move that position also down.
Okay.
And then the other one is in risk management. The Finance Department is taking a little bit more on, so we have Tom Stadler on part-time, so he will be going down. His hours will be going down a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
So any other questions on the expenditure side before going down to revenue?
Go ahead.
All right. So, uh, the, on the tax collector, um, the tax collection is current. Of course, that just changes naturally as the entire budget as a whole changes.
How, how so? How so?
Well, if the expenditures go up or the revenues go down, the tax collect is really a plug number to, to balance the budget, to keep it at, at a zero difference, or not a zero difference, but to accommodate the, uh, five million dollar drawdown on the general fund.
Um, so it's really, it's really the general fund drawdown, not the tax collection. Uh, is it, you're talking about the tax, you're talking about the overall?
So the overall tax collect, correct? Um, that basically when we're putting, when, when I'm putting the budget together, we have the list of the expenses, the list of the revenues and tax collect is a blank number. And the difference between those two, taking into account the expected drawdown is what this number is. It's, it's not really one that we decide on. It's just the necessary number to balance the budget.
But it's not really tax collection. It's other items in there.
No, that's it. That's just the tax collect current.
The Board of Ed increase of the four million has changed it naturally.
So down to finance interest on investments, um, that was initially at seven hundred thousand, uh, but that got reestimated, uh, by our treasurer to be nine hundred thousand, just due to the expected, uh, favorable market conditions. Um, I believe we're outperforming what our plan was for this year as well. So just going forward, he thinks that'll kind of continue in that trend, at least for the next year. Uh, rental of property finance, that is our lease to the Board of Ed for two twenty Elm. That was initially at three fifty thousand, but that is just got a bump to three eighty thousand. Just more active accurately represent what the lease, uh, agreement is at this point in time.
Technically, there's no lease. It's, it's really just the payments the Board of Ed is going to pay from their budget to, to occupy the space. So.
Um, in the Town Clerks Department, conveyance fees, copier revenue and miscellaneous income all got increases. Uh, can, conveyance fees up from the conservatively estimated one point three million up to again, what she thinks is a conservative estimate of one point five million. Um, copy of revenue is up fifteen thousand and miscellaneous income is up three hundred. Um, in the insurance liability line, our department, the member equity line got added for fifty thousand, which is probably a conservative estimate, because I believe that's a pretty hard number to estimate.
Sometimes it is six, six figures. So.
Sometimes, yeah. But I think it also drops down to twenty-five thousand or so.
We get it. It's, it's a mutual companies, mutual operations. And we get a dividend check every year, usually every year. Do we ever not, not get a check, Cheryl?
Is this from Kerma?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, so that completes the changes to the general funds. Are there any other questions there for now?
Six thousand or sixteen thousand?
Sixty-eight hundred.
Sixty-eight hundred.
No, it should come down sixteen thousand eight.
Sixty. Okay. Okay.
Yay.
Sixteen thousand eight hundred?
Yeah.
All right. All right.
And one.
Change. Um, okay. Um, so for the capital project changes, uh, there were only two really. Uh, for EMS, the new ambulance went up for seventy thousand just due to costs and availability, um, issues for ambulances. Uh, for Board of Ed, the refurbished planetarium project dropped a hundred thousand from two hundred fifty to one hundred, uh, just due to recent, uh, higher than expected donations. Um, that's it for capital project changes into the other funds. Uh, the pool fund again had their supply chemicals line go up thirty-eight hundred due to the costs of of chlorine coming in again, higher than anticipated. Uh, the movie fund rental, a rental of property went from zero to six thousand to rep sixty thousand, sorry, to represent.
Our estimated six months of playhouse.
Lease.
Lease.
Yeah, correct. Um, so that is all of the changes that took place.
Josh, can I just ask, uh, because the, the chemicals, uh, just curious as to why that doesn't, it says Recreation Kiwanis Park. Would that not go into the, um, the self-sustaining fund for any reason?
So we didn't put Kiwanis Park into the self-sustaining funds. Um, and maybe John can speak towards that, but.
Probably not self-sustaining.
It's not self, it isn't self-sustaining.
Definitely not self-sustaining.
That's the issue. Mainly that Kiwanis isn't self-sustaining. So that's why the chemicals.
Do we get revenues though for, I mean, when someone buys a pool pass, does it not include Kiwanis?
It includes Kiwanis.
Yeah.
Um, but otherwise the revenues are almost non-existent.
Okay.
You could make it our, for combining, uh, Kiwanis into the pool fund, now that, now that the bonds are paid off, because the people who go to the pool can also go to Kiwanis.
Yeah.
But not the other way.
I actually have never thought about that.
Pool fund.
Right? So.
Swimming fund, you know. Uh, uh, okay. This is just something to think about.
Yeah. Well done.
Thanks.
So let's go first of all to the summary and then, then we're going to go into fees and, because some of the fees could, could. You have, you haven't booked some of the projected fees that we're talking about or had.
So the, let's see, should I bring those here?
Which page do you?
The overall.
Okay.
This, this summary sheet is what I'm talking about.
Oh, I'd like to see.
Now, before we go there, let's just kind of see where we are. So the town operations.
So the town operations are, um, as a whole, up, uh, four point eight percent at forty-one point five million.
This is four point seven. If we deal with the same.
Oh, sorry. I'm looking at the, the entirety of the options, the, the, the.
Four point eight two for the, for everything, not just operations. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, for the department operations, yes, it's up, uh, four point seven percent.
Four point eight two. Okay.
Um, for the Board of Ed Operating Budget, um, uh, including Health, uh, Internal Service Fund is up four point eight percent. Um, the other Board of Ed expenses paid by the town, which includes a four oh one A contribution, tax, supported capital, debt service leases and so on, is up six percent, about six percent. Uh, tax support capital right now is, uh, for the town, one point two million for the Board of Ed, about, um, seventy, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand. Debt services flat year over year. Uh, overall, that is a increase of five point four percent or eight point seven percent for the town's expenses budget.
I'm sorry, why do we not have a, it's actually flat?
For, for
Debt service.
Correct. That is flat.
Kind of unusual to be flat.
Not if you're paying.
Can I, can I speak to that, Kevin?
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, in last year's budget, we had estimates for interest because we thought we were going to have six months worth of interest from bonding. That's not happening. So in going from twenty-three to twenty-four, there's another drop in our debt service that's actually debt service for us. So in keeping it flat, we have what we put in for last year that we didn't use. And then the drop in debt service that was coming down naturally anyway, so that we would need to probably bond close to, uh, I'm saying, let's see, twelve million, ten, twelve, which we're not, to get higher. So that's why we kept it flat. The bonding we're going to do is not going to go above this.
Okay, I'm just, it's curious that we could actually have the same number. There'd be some differentiation, and this is called Town Debt Service.
Right. That's why I was trying to get the bonding done at the same time as doing the, the budget, so we could get the actuals, but we won't be bonding enough to go above what we increased it last year and didn't use.
Oh, I, now I understand, now I understand what you're saying. In other words, without an additional binding, it's last year's number.
Right, right. Plus, plus a cliff, a, a small drop off on our, on our, uh, set debt service that we have to pay every year.
My, my point of those, this is town debt service as opposed to Board of Ed debt service. Is that
In the lines above the other Board of Ed expenses, that includes the seven point six million of, of Board of Ed debt service, which is also flat year over year.
Okay, so their, their debt service is up in there, uh, up in there. It's kind of odd. We
It's, it's still within the, the, the debt service.
So we're, we're paying the, their debt service. We break, we break it out to show that there's another seven point six million dollars, eight million dollars, seven, seven, seven point six eight million dollars that's paid for the various school building projects. Um, but, but, but the Board of Ed doesn't pay for their debt service.
Right.
So.
And also, uh, Josh, so just on our summary sheet, which we'll get to in a moment, but you, you do sum up the tax-funded capital budget to be two point zero four.
Correct.
Okay, so that's these two lines brought together.
And that's seven, uh, seven, six, nine.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
So then you have, uh, and the non-wage contingency is three hundred thousand, which is sort of contingent with, consistent with, on the other hand, do we have union contracts to be added in here?
So that's in the wage contingent, the, uh, salary contingency line.
Mm-hmm.
And
Which is where?
That I will have to pull up is, I believe it's like two twenty-five, but I'll have to actually pull that number up for you. So.
You know, I was thinking, we didn't budget for charter revision. Which would be primarily legal.
So the salary contingency is at two hundred fifty thousand, which has the town hall, uh, not the non-union employees cola, as well as the town hall unions, uh, negotiated raises that are under negotiation currently.
I would think charter revision is going to be a fifty to a hundred thousand dollar legal bill. We always forget something and then, then when we come, then we're in the budget. Oh, we didn't budget for that. So there's no money.
We could, we could just double check what we spent back in twenty sixteen.
It would actually argue for increasing the legal budget.
Legal fees, yeah.
Legal fees from three fifty to four or four fifty, because I think charter revision, revision is probably pretty certain. And, uh, and it's intensive legal bill.
Was it? Was it intensive? I don't.
I mean, I thought it was mostly just volunteer.
No, but it's a big, a big legal bill with probably at least fifty thousand.
Okay.
Fifty maybe, but yeah.
A hundred seems high. Yeah.
We can, why don't we just double check that subject to what it was? I don't know that, do you think it would be more or less than it was?
I was talking last night about, about Stanford's charter revision, um, with the fellow who's the chairman of the Revision Commission and, uh, I think it can be a substantial legal bill, so.
Okay, we can check on that.
Let's just
We might want to, we might want to bring that three fifty to four hundred, um, specifically for, for the charter revision edition.
Just if you could just report back to us, Josh, what it was six years ago.
Six years ago is when it took place.
I beg your pardon?
It took place six years ago.
Yeah, twenty-six. It would be, uh, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen fiscal year.
Gotcha. Will do.
So that brings us to a total general fund budget increase of five point four three.
Correct.
Which is primarily inflation and outside contractors and wage increases within outside of, not so much internally, because most of our internal is, uh,
It's mostly salaries.
Settled, settled, uh, union contract. So, but inflation is the big, big driver.
Correct. There's also, um, yeah, um, the return of, of tax-supported capital, of course, also plays a role. Last year, the use of bond premium wiped out about
I should, and do we have bond premium to use in lieu of this one point two million?
Not much. I think there's about a hundred.
Not enough. Uh, yeah.
Hundred fifty thousand-ish.
Another, another part of that increase, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, on the tax-funded capital, which is about two million, compared to last year, tax-funded capital was two hundred.
That's because we used the bond premium to offset it.
So to, to your point, that, that, that's a probably a big.
Yeah, out of the eight point seven million increase that was about, you know.
It's always over a million. You look back at twenty twenty-one.
We all
Jumped up to one point four.
Yeah.
That's, that, that's, that's a controllable number in terms of how you, uh, how much you want to, what if it answers could, could adjust that number? Anyway.
Right. So. Any other questions?
Hey, for the questions about the overall budget before we talk about fees and so we have fees, we've done all fees except for Public Works and, well, the way, the weddings in particular, do we? We did recreation over. Okay.
So they're on the tablets. I have physical copies if anyone wants them.
I'll take one. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. That's the fees. I've got those already. It hadn't changed since the other day.
Wedding.
Uh, that's, okay. Thank you.
Uh, sure. I'll take it. Thanks.
Okay, why don't we? Tiger, who's, what, we're going to come up for Public Works?
Did I make those changes to the?
Yeah.
Did I change four hundred thousand for the legal fees or should we wait until after this process and take a look at how much the legal fees actually cost for the charter review?
Well, considering that the the, um, project has to be completed in order to go to the voters by going to really go into the volume fiscal year as well.
Okay.
But, uh, if you can check, can you, can you quickly check?
It'll take a little bit of time.
A little bit of time?
Yeah. We'll take digging through the.
I mean, sort of, well.
Can we just call Ira?
Have we budgeted? Yep. Tucker, why don't you call Ira? Okay, let's move to, we'll come back to that. Good morning, Tiger. How are you? Good, how are you?
Good. So, uh, for, uh, D P W, um, we are only proposing through a administration transfer station, um, and wastewater facility. We are only, um, opposing one change. That's in the transfer station. Um, changing our dump fee from, uh, currently at ninety-five dollars a ton to a hundred dollars a ton. So our tipping fee for, uh, that's passed on to the garbage haulers. Right now, um, we are paying ninety-four fifty for our contract to, uh, haul it away from the site, to transfer it away. And we're charging the haulers ninety-five dollars a ton. We'd like to change that from ninety-five to a hundred. Um, and then we'll be coming, uh, back, but this contract will expire at some point in time, uh, within the next year, we'll go to bid and then we'll see exactly what those numbers are and look to go from a hundred to a hundred and five, but this will help us alleviate some of the, uh, costs associated with the sticker fee in the fact that the sticker fees are still remaining the same at forty-five and seventy-five. So there's a shortfall on, um, garbage hauling on the, on the sticker fee side. As far as where we stand, um, with our peers, Darien charges a hundred and twelve, Darien and Greenwich charge a hundred and twelve, Norwalk is at ninety-five, Stanford's at one oh one, Wilton and Weston are approximately ninety-three, ninety-five, and Westport's a hundred and ten. So we're right in the middle. Um, not worried about someone taking their garbage elsewhere. Um, but, uh, but we feel that, you know, staying a little bit ahead of the curve each time is, is, uh, better than being right on it. Right now it's ninety, like I said, ninety-four and a half and ninety-five. We like to have a little bit of a flex. That helps, uh, take off some of our operating expenses as well.
Has that change been reflected in the revenues expanded?
Uh, no, because it's, it's still, we estimated seven thousand tons and it fluctuates back and forth. So we, we kept that, that flat at four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as far as our, our tipping fees. We did not, uh, not change that. Um, excuse me, we did. We changed it by twenty-five thousand. I'm sorry. So yes. So we went from four and a quarter to four fifty. Seven times five is thirty-five, but we, we're not by twenty-five instead. Sorry.
Why you're dropping down to septage? It says current fee a hundred and five. Is that an error?
Uh, no, the current fee is a hundred and five. I had a, I had a typo in the proposed fee. It was a hundred and five and a hundred. Like, it should have been a hundred and five and a hundred and five. The current fee is a hundred and five. That was set last year by the Board of Finance.
But, okay, so that's the typo there in the proposal.
Yeah. I had a typo in the table.
Okay. So the only fee we're talking about is the, uh,
The transfer station tipping.
Tipping fee.
At present.
To go to a hundred dollars.
Right.
I, I guess since they're reflected in the budget, well, I guess technically we're supposed to approve the fees.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, so, but we haven't voted on the other fees because there weren't changes. What, what, what other fees have we?
Lan used made a change in, in, uh, P and Z. She made the, uh, the residential change as far as inspections.
So why don't, why don't, why don't we move at the end to increase the fees and then we'll reflect in the minutes those that we've actually uh, acted on. Right? There's only a few. We're going to have the wedding piece to discuss now, but.
I have one. Lan, you says one.
Health. Yeah. So why don't we, why don't we do that? We'll have one vote, but we'll reflect the fee increases that we elect and understand we're
Sounds like they're already been incorporated in the revenues anyway.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So any questions about Tiger about increasing the tipping?
None here.
Okay, thank you, Tiger. So now John and T B. Were we able to get the wedding? So.
Maybe you went.
Drum roll.
Beautiful.
I love the river.
Got a few upgrades there.
Looking. We can get some gondolas. It's going to be really nifty.
So, so as part of the upgrade, the Wavine House, besides the, uh, physical things we're doing in John Collebra and some of those things, the, uh, as you know, we hired case study brands to create this website so that we have a separate website, separate from the partial recreation apartment um, for, for brides and other event planners to go to, uh, to go to. So this is, this is near final and about to be launched?
This gives you a nice, you know, chosen a logo, which is, uh, this over here, and that's very representative in all of the, the building.
With the windows.
Windows, it's around the light fixtures. So we've chosen that as the logo. Uh, we've, we're starting to populate it with different, um, photos.
What do we end up with a, a URL for the?
Wavine House Events.
Wavine House Events.
Tried to buy the other one, but it weren't sold. Um.
What's the other one?
Wavine House. So I'm going to.
Who?
Not local, apparently, and not for sale. We tried.
Also make sure that we, you know, we show that it's available for, as a community space. This isn't just for weddings. So we want the community to feel very welcome there. Um, take you through all of the different aspects of that. These photos actually were part of the New Canaan High School Photography Class. We asked them to go over this all. And they did an outstanding job capturing some of the beautiful elements there. Um, we have, this is a nice page just reflecting through the building, what everyone needs to know about Wavine Age, how it all started. Through the building, what everyone needs to know about Wavenage, how it all started. Um, and then, of course, you know, all the contact information, if you're interested in having an event there, scheduling the tour. Um, and then finally the about page. It looks much better when I'm not scrolling through like the, to give you an idea of where we're at.
It's like, is this going to be linked to the town website?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, what we're doing, we've, we've asked now, um, any current brides, we have a photo release, so we're asking them to let us have their photos. So that we can update some of these. They're older and obviously, you know, we're constantly. Working with the conservancy, um, to make sure that we update again any of the projects that they're taking on. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Just a question, are we permitted, are brides permitted? To have weddings outdoors now with a tent? Is that still a question?
You're laughing. Sorry. Why do I always pick the questions that? It's not, it's not something we're offering, um, we are.
Well.
We are doing a demo this summer because the stars have aligned and the right client has presented itself and. Um, the the threshold was that you had to book the Friday, the Saturday and the Sunday because of the displacement of. Of business.
Right.
Because of the tent going up and also the concerns with wear and tear on the grass and the grounds.
The year and stuff. So I think it will work out a lot of the. Let us figure out the bugs for sure. So.
And then if it works, we'll, we'll come for Parks and Rec in the fall and say, and if it doesn't work, well, that's it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We do the walled garden is an option for weddings. And several have taken us up on that.
Oh, that can be tented?
Not tented, but just as an outdoor space.
Yeah, right. And have you seen an uptick in the, uh, number of weddings that are being booked?
So the, the, I mean, there's great demand. Everyone loves Waveney. Um, the truth is. Twenty twenty three, the the high demand dates are mostly gone. Um, which is May, June, September, October and Saturdays. In those months, they're all, all taken. Um, we're trying to push the the shoulder dates, the Fridays and the Sundays, and also. You know, the the shoulder seasons that are not the first pick. Um, and there are plenty of dates still in twenty twenty three. It, once the, once the demand dates are gone, that second tier comes in. Um. The, the, no one blinks at the current rates. They're, they're low. Um, so our proposal for rates, um, goes into twenty twenty four and I'm already taking calls for twenty twenty four. So I'd love to. Be able to. Quote higher.
Sure.
Um, it, we're, we're, we're on the low side of our comp set. Um, and, and most of our, well, in a couple of cases. Um. We are so, so the. Cranberry Park is closed through, um, in, in, uh, Norwalk, the Gallagher mansion is closed through twenty twenty four. So that's. Outside of our, you know, not, not an issue coming into twenty twenty four. And the, um, Lansbury House in Ridgefield. Has taken their rates way up from even when we did the analysis last year.
What's way up?
Well, way up. Um, they have a year round rate of Friday and Saturday at seventy five hundred and Saturdays. Sorry, Friday and Sunday at seventy five and Saturday nine thousand. So our rates are still below that, um. And we took into account, um, a couple of sort of revenue management strategies as we came up with these rates. Mostly, mostly, um. Observing demand patterns. So anything that is the first pick and will be sold easily regardless of rate. We, we, we took it higher. So we created a third season. Historically, it's only been high season and low season. Um. And, uh, we created the premium season, which is the, as I mentioned before, those four months. May, June, September, October. Um, so those rates, that's a new season for us. We haven't had that distinct differentiation. Um, and then, uh. We. We took Saturdays up higher because those are the first to go, hoping to incentivize the booking of the shoulder days. Because Friday and Sundays are are largely available. Um, and then we. Made it more, um, we we raised the rates for non residents. A little bit more than for residents, um, just to keep that advantage for resident, um.
So residents always have about a ten percent discount.
Yes, it's about ten percent. We rounded off here and there, so.
And who's the residence? The family of the groom or?
It's a great question. I mean, I get a lot of calls for parents who are residents and the, and the, the bride is, is not. Um, but, but because the checklist is being written by the, often the resident, um. That, that's been my threshold.
That's how you measure.
Yeah, okay.
Shouldn't we define that so that we, you know, if if one, if if one, if one number, the family is, uh.
Going rented on behalf of someone in my family that doesn't live here, as long as I show proof that I'm a resident.
Oh, I didn't realize, I would think we want to say if if one, if the bride or the groom is, is a resident, but otherwise. You're, you're an house, you're not resident, so.
It's a great question. It's often the parent. Who is trying to get their kid to come.
I wouldn't limit it to the bride and.
Bride and groom or the parents.
The parents, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, cousin and stuff is kind of like stretching the rule.
I haven't had that experience yet.
That we know about.
Tucker just said that. That's what she would do. I think we need to define that.
It's easy to do.
It's pretty easy for people.
Very easy to do.
Parents, parents.
Six people.
Six, six.
Parents, bride.
Right, well, you're right, because. I don't know. Do you want to go there? It, it's ten percent, but it's, uh.
So, so the, the, the beauty of this rate strategy is it doesn't require any service changes or upgrades to the house. It's, it can be done immediately with no, with no change. It's just a different way of looking at the calendar. And the demand patterns. So pretty, pretty low risk thing, especially when it fits so, so nicely with the comp set. Um, I, I, I personally don't see a downside. Um, in that when I quote rates currently, literally, there's never, I mean, they don't even think about it.
That's why I still, I still feel we're kind of on the, on the low side because, given all the improvements we're doing with, uh, it, uh.
We only approve changes once a year during the budgets.
No, but, but on the other hand, you know, the people are grandfather with what they booked for, you know, a year out.
Looking already for twenty twenty four, so I'd have to get some.
I mean, we, again, this is the time to really say, you know.
Yeah.
Especially when we look at the competition.
Yeah.
Whether it be other facilities or country clubs or hotels, you know, it's, these are very reasonable rates.
Very reasonable.
Very much so.
About if, once we reach the position where the elevators in, the bathrooms are updated, everything is, you know, where we hope to be. Where would you think these rates ought to be?
Could go up.
Today's numbers, yeah, I think another couple thousand dollars, but especially on the prime days. You know, air conditioning is also a big one.
Right.
You know, that would change our prime season because right now we take out July and August.
And when is this fully expected to get HVAC and the new?
Oh, we have no plans to do HVAC because, uh, Tiger, is the plan done for the? Replacement system? We, you know, we know what. What we need to do, but it's gonna be a two and a half million dollar item probably to replace the heating system and the air conditioning. What?
He's still working on file.
But we're gonna bring natural gas to the house, so that'll be a change that we didn't anticipate. So. Right. So with that, that, you know, these are the proposals on. Do, do they have this?
Yeah.
You should, yep.
I just have a quick question on the walled garden rent. A walled garden rental. If somebody was just to, I've done weddings in there. I didn't even know that you're supposed to pay for that. Uh, is that, somebody has to call somebody and?
Yeah, you're, you're supposed to book that.
Minute wedding or?
And, and mainly when we receive revenue for it is when somebody's having their wedding reception at the house and they want to have the wedding there, so.
Do we, do we ever do the wedding and not the reception?
Yeah.
People, there's some times that people will just show up and do it too.
Okay, but do we ever book the?
I haven't. Most of the time it's a ten hour booking window and it's at the full price.
Well, if somebody shows up with six people to have a wedding, that's one thing. But if somebody shows up and starts setting up chairs.
Well, anytime, anytime there's a, yeah, anytime there's a call for that, we say no.
Right.
Because we could be losing that time at the house. If somebody wanted to rent the house.
Right.
They're renting the house and the grounds immediately around it, so.
That reminds me of a subject, you know, I, I, I tend to think we don't supervise the park enough on Sundays especially. There's no full time staff person there. And it kind of like. There's a lot to protect there and a lot to, uh, watch out, you know. I think we gotta think about having some kind of coverage on Sunday for whether.
It'd be nice all weekend long.
Yeah.
You know, uh, anything from the field use to things at the weddings and.
Exactly.
All times of, types of things.
So. We did because.
But when we closed the parks down, we had.
But it's just, it's just kind of remarkable that we don't. You know, the police going through is one thing, but. You know, there's a lot going on there and, and a lot of reason to have some supervision.
It'd be nice if somebody lived there.
It did, it did help.
Keep an eye on everything. Didn't we used to have someone living at Waveney? No more.
No more, no, right now, nobody lives there.
Not that they couldn't.
Yeah.
Josh?
Josh, you want to live there? I don't do weddings.
We've been joshing Josh about moving to New Canaan. Okay, uh, so that's the presentation on the web, on the proposed new rates, which we will vote on as part of the overall vote. So any, any further questions? Okay, thank you, John. Thank you, Phoebe.
Do you want to do recreation?
I'm sorry.
We don't have to, but it'd be nice. Go ahead and do recreation.
Yeah, makes sense.
So bring, bring the legal fee budget four hundred.
Yeah.
Okay. Recreation piece.
Recreation fees, um, just as a reminder, last year we did not make any changes to recreation fees, um. Mainly because I had no idea what we could be doing and shouldn't be doing at that time. So this, this year we have made some minor changes. Um, we've, we've added in a twenty five dollar, um, usage fee, which goes to the athletic foundation on the, the sports that need that. Then, other than that, very small. Additions to the fees mainly to cover the costs of when we're hiring outside contractors to run different programs. So it doesn't affect our revenue. But it does, it does keep our revenue positive.
John, before you. Yeah, forget it. You had estimated the. Gross amount of increased revenues from the increased wedding fees. Is that, yeah, in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, so you've added, and what did you add? Approximately sixty thousand dollars?
That's, yes, that's a real rough estimate because we're taking a, uh. You know, if we can book Fridays and Sundays, that changes it drastically. So.
And that's where having Phoebe working in that and trying to, trying to actually promote, actually is a little line item in, in the. Budget for, for the Wavine Weddings for advertising, right, which we've never really done before, so.
Yeah, we've increased. That's been increased.
We're currently only on wedding wire and it's a very passive.
Right. Just, just showing up on some of the wedding, um. Platforms that people look to, so it would be helpful, so.
John, John, where's the twenty five?
Okay, so in soccer, flag football and adult softball.
Okay.
So we've had to include it in there because that is, that is, it's a pass through. You know, but it's a pass through that goes to the athletic foundation.
We're gonna collect it.
We're gonna collect it, yep. Someone on, on those, those groups. Um, other than that, the only other, um. Major change, not major change, um, we added in pickleball. To the, um, mix of pla- of racket sports. You know, we opened last year. I feel we got everybody hooked. We weren't sure what we should do.
They were already hooked.
They're hooked. So, but we, we brought that in at, at reasonable rates lower than our other racket sports.
Do we provide any, um, sort of compensation, not compensation, but, uh, any discount for people who can't afford these rates?
Yes, it goes, it goes through, um, social services.
Okay.
Um, any, anytime we have a program, people can, uh. Apply. They make the recommendations to us and so far. We haven't turned down any, anybody.
Sure.
We don't know the details that go on, which I kind of like it that way.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so when they recommend somebody. Usually it's a discount and a lot of them are on the, um, Wavine Pool, so.
Thank you.
We, we didn't make any real changes to Wavine Pool. The only thing we did do is we increased the guest fee on all our, all our. Things, whether it's a guest fee for tennis, paddle tennis, we increased that from ten to twelve dollars for a daily guest fee. And to keep it simple, since the same attendants work different places, we raised it up at the pool, the two dollars too.
So those are the three items.
Those are the three main items. We did raise some other, as we, as you go down through the list.
So, so when we vote, we'll vote for the schedule of, of. Recreation department fees.
And these went through the Park and Rec Commission.
Right. Okay. Any further questions? So that, does that conclude fees? Yeah. So if we could craft a motion to approve the fees that were presented by the various departments and then we'll list them in the, uh, which departments. So we have a record of, uh. The approval. Um, I would move that we approve the various fees. That have been presented and we will, uh. Admit them so we know. What was, what's been approved. Um.
Second here.
Further discussion? All favor?
Hi.
All right. So that includes fees. That brings us to where we are. Are we, Josh? I imagine a lot of these numbers are gonna move with the board of finance. So, so what we're passing on is kind of like a draft.
Right, so I can show the process of kind of how we came about and the, the reasoning behind it.
Yeah.
Um, let me share my screen again.
What page are you on?
Um. So I'm gonna be referencing things I'll put on the board that were, um. Brought before the Board of Finance and kind of going, go through some of the working documents. There is a page. Um, let me just find it for you. It's gonna be page. Thirty three in your books. Okay. So, uh, the Board of Finance had approved in January the creation of the Self Sustaining Fund for Recreation and Wedding. Um. Just in order to give John more freedom with his programs in order to kind of, uh. Create new programs when there's over bookings or, or when he has the revenue coming in, so he's not turning people away that are on wait lists or. For programs that sell out within eighteen hours of when they're created. He has the ability to use some of that revenue to create a second class or a second dancer or. Or whatever the program might be. Um, so this was really all to facilitate kind of that, um, that need of. Uh, the citizens of, of New Canaan that just want to use these programs, but we just can't. Create the programs fast enough for him.
Exactly. Father, daughter dance.
Yeah.
Sold out in eighteen hours. We would have loved to, maybe we were to switch times and had a second session that night, but. And as budget reasons, you can't.
Yeah, as they're adding on new programs, it's probably hard to predict out. You know, a year and a half from now, which programs will be a hit and they'll need more of. So this is kind of to facilitate that. So this was the main slide that was presented to the Board of Finance and I know there's a lot of numbers. I'll try to just zoom in. Um, this highlights over here what the budget for all of the recreation departments was, the proposed budget. Just blow it up a lot bigger. Okay, so this encompasses most of the departments, civic activity, administration, Wavine House. Paddle tennis, parks, buildings and so on. Um. And the goal was really to pull. And the goal is really to pull out the expenses that support the programs, not necessarily that support the buildings, because we'd be, uh, ma- maintaining the buildings anyway. And that, that doesn't really ensure that it would be a self sustaining fund, at least in.
Why do we, why do we care about this?
Why?
We've already looked at the budget numbers when they were in your budget. You, you're moving them to another.
Right.
Ledger, ledger, but we really, nothing's changing. So.
Nothing really changed. Um, so this kind of shows the, just the breakdown between what remains in the general fund and these two parts of the self sustaining fund. Um, the wedding side and the self sustaining, the expenses and the revenues. Um, so this will tie out with the other funds budget that you have. Um, and the process was just kind of us, me, John and Ann meeting and going line by line through each of the budgets, deciding how much or what full lines to take and bring over into that other fund.
So can you just go back to that first slide? But I, I don't see it in our budget books. But so, so if I, if I'm seeing it correctly, uh, so what's left in the general fund is, is expensive about one point four, I think that says. Okay, so that, that's maintained. There's a little bit of revenues that you can offset that with, but then what the real self sustaining fund, including the wedding.
Are these?
Yeah. Is about what?
Seventy to the good.
Right, but I, I mean, in total, it's about a million dollars.
Correct. Uh, yeah, just under.
Okay, okay. So it's about a million dollars. Each year we'll see that those expense lines that have offsets with revenues will be in this self sustaining fund for most part.
Correct.
Okay. And if there was anything that you needed that wasn't considered uh, in the self sustaining fund in terms of line items, we, would you bring it back to the board of selectmen in the upcoming year? Like you're adding something or is it this self sustaining fund? You have the authority to?
I think it still has to go through the regular.
Still has to go through the process. That's what I want to know.
Yeah, I presume.
Yeah. Okay. So still contracts, all that stuff still comes through the board of selectmen, even though it sits in a sustaining.
Similar to the pool. Yes, that would be, that's.
Right. Similar to the sewer, all the.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's still.
This one be sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
We administer all funds, not just the general fund. So.
Right. Okay. So what, what, why are we separating it out? What is the benefit?
You know, Steve used to, Steve used to come and say, I can't create new programs because I don't have rev, don't have the revenues to. I don't have, I don't have the money in the budget, even though we knew the revenues were going to come in and offset it. So.
Gotcha.
This was kind of fixing something that.
In the general fund, no matter how good his programs are doing.
Yeah.
We can increase his expense budget to.
Yeah.
Right. Good.
Yeah.
You know, I, the reason I, I asked this and, and thank you for that level of detail, um, that you're providing because you're going to still see the same level of detail. God bless you. On the, um, you know, you have, have the line items by programs and so forth. And I was, Josh and I have been talking about the library budget for an operating and almost the same thing, kind of the level of detail that we're providing for the recreation fund, the self sustaining fund is the kind of detail that we should be looking for, for the library too. So.
That really, because we, we give them a lump sum grant. I mean, they, they justify it to us and they justify it to the board of finance, but we don't supervise their budget. We, we give them a, a dollar grant, just like we give the grant to the board of education and they.
But that grant is.
We don't administer their budget.
So understanding how that grant comes about is understanding this levels of detail that we provide for all of our other budgets.
But it's not a town budget. It's their budget. They're, they're a separate nonprofit.
Including, uh, salaries, uh, both full time and part time. You know, we don't, we maybe have eight line items or what have you in terms of utilities. Et cetera. And I just think when we are, for any of our, um, uh, relationships that we have in terms of recreation, library, et cetera.
Library, not, not library though.
Okay. Well, I just finished and then you can add, um, just the level of detail that we, so we understand if an increase, um, is going to be up four point seven percent or whatever the number may be. Where's that number being derived from? Is it being derived by salaries? Is it derived by programming? Is it derived? It's just, there are not a lot of line items. It's not.
We should ask the library to do that.
Yeah, I did. I, I spoke to Lisa about that and she's working on that. I mean, obviously it's a busy week for her. So, uh, but I think going forward, uh, the level of detail is not different from what we do for the same level of commitment that we're making, for instance, in recreation. And the only reason I bring that up is just because it's similar, but, um, and so we, Josh and I have both spoken to Elisa about that and we've corresponded with her. So just going forward.
That, that's their budget book. You know, that's not.
Talking about the line item.
Not a town budget. So we shouldn't do that. We, we shouldn't make it something that's not our, we, we give them a grant just like the board of education in our general fund budget. The board of education grant is one number. Their, but their books are a separate legal entity.
So we've always had it in our budget book, the libraries on page thirty four, I believe it is, but, um, it does provide line items, always has. Uh, and so now that we have a new library, we're very excited about, uh, we are going to see some changes in terms of those line items. Uh, it's not different than what we've had in the past. It's maybe five or six or seven lines.
We can't manage their lines. So.
And what we want to, just like the board of education, when they're seeing the components of what is driving an increase. And so we've shared sort of what those things could be and, um, we're working back and forth on that. So.
Actually, under the charter, the board of finance tells the departments and library how they want their budget presented. Right? So we don't, we, we can't do that.
We can ask for more information.
No, it's, it's the board of finances job under the charter. So read the charter.
Board of selectmen also have the opportunity to take a look at all budget line items.
The finance prescribes how they should present their budgets.
Well, we've, we've made several changes to how this budget looks like and, and we appreciate that. I've been doing it since two thousand and six. It's both on the board of finance and the town council and now on the board of selectmen and as CFO.
Gotta find the charter.
So, uh, we certainly appreciate, uh, all the work that's being done and Josh interview in particular, John and your new role. Uh, it's not easy. We appreciate, um, uh, when I look back at the budget information that, uh, I worked with back more than twelve years ago. When I look at the, uh, board of education, just an example, we had four sheets of paper and this is just a very comprehensive, um, review and detailed analysis that I can't thank everybody.
But the board of finance did that. We have no jurisdiction with the board of education.
I'm complimenting, uh, Mr. First Selectman, the, uh, the work that's been done by so many people. And it's always been, you know, the start of the work that's been by management and bottoms up and bringing it up. The first overview, the public view of the budget is when it comes before the board of selectmen. And so really, we, we appreciate it. We know there's a lot more work to be done with the board of finance and the town council. So, uh, this is just, uh, one step in the, in the process and, uh, I want to just appreciate, say how much we appreciate that. So thank you so much for doing it. Very comprehensive and we, we like when there's consistency and transparency and, uh, and when we ask for it, we, we're, we're glad when we receive it. So thank you. Thank you again.
Follow the board of finance. Follow the board of finance. Okay. Anyway.
You got that message? Whispering, follow the board of finance. You know, you know what you're doing.
So I reprinted, uh, the budget read and vote. I can grab a copy of it that integrated the change in legal fees and also the, um, change in animal control salary unless you have. The main finance. Hopefully isn't.
Thank you. I'll just, while we're waiting for Tucker, let me just also say, when we look at the overall budget and particularly with respect to capital um, and looking at both the tax funded capital and, uh, the bond of capital and the total, uh, the amount certainly is larger than we've seen, obviously because the, uh, the police department is in there and the training, uh, but even when you strip those out, uh, the amount tends to be larger. And when we have just completed, uh, we're not thoroughly through yet, but the ARPA funding is a fair amount of funding that has come from ARPA that's taking, um, that's basically funded things that otherwise would have come from either tax funded capital or bonded capital. And I think that, I guess one would expect that that number would be slightly lower or flat. When you think about capital this year, having had the benefit of ARPA, um, funding, maybe about two million of the six, um, that are, that we have in terms of ARPA funding. And so as we look at the total capital, one might think about, um, smoothing it a little bit more, um, so into, into, um, subsequent years, nobody's questioning the need for certain things that have been put in the, in the capital budget, but just the kind of, um, jump in terms of what was going to be required for, uh, capital just seems to come all at once for this upcoming fiscal year. And so my recommendation would be as you think about all of the capital requirements, now that you've got this big picture all together, it will help to think about what the priorities are now, because maybe you can't do all of those in one year. But as you think about that, and that's for the board of finance and the town council to consider, um, that will be, um, an important part of the process and thinking about how much of that you want to cover in, in one fiscal year.
What are the names? Okay. Have these changed?
They have changed slightly. Um, the one you should be looking at has line, uh, nine, the set one, uh, hundred and seventy million, three, nine, two, one, nine, five.
Forty thousand dollars?
Uh, thirty eight ish.
Okay. Okay.
So it's, it should be pretty clear. The highlighted is what to vote on. The rest are to read.
I'm not following. Are we going to read each item? General fund?
Generally you do, uh, go through each of those one to eight and then vote on number nine. And then vote on ten through thirteen.
Okay, so this is the budget read.
Yes.
And both, yeah.
Um, general fund total town budget, forty one million, five, five forty three oh ninety eight. Total BOE operating health insurance transfer budget, hundred and three million. Eight forty six, seven forty eight. Total BOE expenses paid by the town, one million, two fifty five, five oh eight. Tax funded capital, two. I thought we, we saw that as one point two million.
One point two on the town side and then seven sixty nine on the.
Oh, it's the combined.
This is the combined, yeah.
Combined tax funded capital, two million, four, oh forty seven, six twenty five. Death service, the combined amount is seventeen million, six sixty three, oh sixty four. Non wage contingency is three hundred thousand.
Was that supposed to be two fifty?
So the, that's the.
No, I thought we made, I thought we, I thought we made that three, three hundred.
Typical for non wage, the, uh, salary contingency is at two fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Total library budget, one number, twenty, two million, six eighty three, eight eighty. And the transfers and outside agencies, a million fifty two, two seventy two. So we're voting on a total general fund operating expenditure budget of a hundred and seventy million, three ninety two, one ninety five. I move we approve that general fund operating expenditure budget. Second.
Second.
On paper, bye.
Bye. Hi. Josh, can you just say what that number, uh, is that the five point four three percent or thereabouts?
The, the hundred seventy, what that constitutes as an increase?
Yeah.
Um, that is a increase of uh, five point four five.
Five four five.
Five four five.
So did we do an increase in the legal fees?
Yes, to four hundred.
So that's a, that's fifty thousand of the.
Right, it's.
Changes from we had before, minus the.
Yep.
Redu- reductions we have the animal. Okay. That brings us to, uh, the general fund revenue budget total. Revenue budget total of eight million, two ninety four, six sixty five. The fund balance contribution, five million dollars. That's the board of finances.
Items individually.
We're voting each.
Yep.
These items individually. So the, the, the revenue budget totals eight million, two ninety four, six sixty five. I move or approve that, that item.
Second here.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Now the five million fun, fun balance contribution is the board of finances assumption. They, they will probably change that.
Correct. That gets changed when they vote on the mill rate in May.
Okay, so they, it's five million dollars. I move we approve that number.
Second.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Amount to be raised by taxation, a hundred and fifty seven million. Oh ninety seven, five thirty. I move we approve that number.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
General fund operating revenue budget total is a hundred and seventy, three ninety two, hundred and ninety five dollars. I move or approve that number.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Sewer. Sewer fund operating expense budget total is one million, nine twenty one, six ninety nine, and the sewer capital fund budget is eight seventy nine hundred. So we're, uh, we're voting on the sewer fund revenue and expense budget of two million. Seven ninety two, five ninety nine. I move we approve that number.
Second here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now this is not, I never understand why we have to vote on these, but.
I don't think technically you do, but it has traditionally been done. So.
I'll read quickly. The dog license fund revenue expense budget is twenty nine thousand, five forty. The parking fund revenue expense budget is a hundred and twenty thousand. The railroad fund ra- revenue expense budget is ninety six thousand, three thirty seven. The rental property fund revenue expense budget is twelve thousand, one ninety five. The wave any pool fund revenue expense budget is. The rental, um, property revenue expense budget is twelve thousand, one, one ninety five rental property. I thought we just had this sixty thousand dollars from the playoffs to that.
Movie theater.
Oh, the movie theater, theater. Oh, oh, that's down in the movie theater fund. Okay. But the rental property fund, okay, we're not treating two twenty as a rental property.
No, that's going, passing through the general.
Right, okay. The, um, wave any pool fund revenue and expense budget is five sixty eight, eight hundred. The movie theater fund revenue expense budget is a hundred and ninety eight, five seventy one. And the recreation, here's the self sustaining fund.
Correct.
The recreation and wedding fund revenue expense budget is one million, oh thirty four, oh, oh, oh. So therefore, all these combined, all the total other funds budget is two million, oh fifty nine, four forty three. I move you approve that number.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. This completes the approval process for the board of selectmen for the proposed two thousand twenty three, twenty four fiscal budget. Budget will now be forwarded to the board of finance as per sound charter. Does that conclude our budget process?
That's it.
All right. Congratulations, Josh. Thank you for all your.
Thank you guys.
Hard work since October.
Great job.
Yeah.
And if you're still on, thank you. She's still on.
She had to drop off.
Thank you, Tucker. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, you said, guys.
Okay, thank you all. See you next Tuesday. I mo- I move adjourn. All in favor? Aye.